Recording in progress.
Meeting of the Rio Grande City Council. Thank you everyone for your patience. Roll call. Mayor Garance, here. Mayor Proton Parker, here. Councilmember Orr, here. Councilmember Wilson, here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph Lum Brown Act. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please leave comments to a mass bump of three minutes. Of them, anyone? Are there any hand raised or we can show them? And we will close public presentation. We'll move on to consent calendar. Is there any one who is a council member who'd like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Then I will call for a motion to approve the consent calendar. Have a motion, second, vote. Motion carries five zero. Report in the staff communication, city manager. Page forty-seven in our packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So tomorrow, Wednesday, seventeenth at one thirty P M, there will be a ceremonial groundbreaking for the water capital improvement project. That will take place again at one thirty at Douglas Street Water Tank. It's on the west, farthest west side of Douglas Street, up the hill. There will be a groundbreaking ceremony with Senator McGuire, Supervisor Bushnell, and Mayor Garance amongst other representatives, we have representatives from CalPLO B S, leading the former director, Mr. Giliducci, who was born and raised here in this. So we're looking forward to that. And certainly all the council members are invited and encouraged to attend. Beyond that, unless there's any other questions amongst the, for the written staff report, we're happy to answer those questions.
Thank you, city manager. Anyone have any questions? No hand raised, no emails? What's that item? You can move on. Yeah, oh, I am. And we are going to make a change to the agenda. We are going to move item two under special call items, financial support for the camera system related to public restrooms at Fire and Spark to the first item after these staff reports. So we're going to do that in this morning. It's page sixty-seven in our packets. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So back into council meeting on the June eighteenth, the Mayor Proton Parker requested that the council agenda is invited to discuss a financial contribution covering portion of the cost of the camera system for the public restrooms at Fire and Spark. In this, I think the council is well aware of that terms. Happy to receive that last take of that. So with that, I would recommend to the mayor turn over the meeting to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. I asked for this to be on the agenda because I do think that was a pretty awful vandalism over there. And it's not the only place in town where we have these incidents of vandalism varying, to varying degrees. I think that it is important for us as a city council to support and encourage locally to crack down on this kind of vandalism. Because even if it's just in one place, that sends a message that, you know, this is something we crack down on. I also think that that is a really our only public park as of now. And lots of events occurred there. I think it would be a big help to our police department potentially if we did have some cameras over there. And I think it would just be of benefit to the unity, again vandalism crimes, all kinds of stuff. So I just thought it would be very nice for us to pitch in some amount, you know, to be discussed and show our support for, you know, to crack down on vandalism. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Garance, would you like to come up and say?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, council. So we had Vance Security give us a bid on what the cameras are doing. So let's start while Tim Barson is in the heart of the street. So there is good. First, I want to thank the council for to put twenty thousand dollars in playground equipment. Excellent. So, you know, we do have vandalism. So this is starts with the tables too. So the tables of purchase are eight hundred dollars. People purchasing with memorial thing on, you know, so. So now they're just starting to pull them apart too. So now that's an opposite part because they have moving plaques, which, you know, is in their pocket. So back to the bathrooms. So just before that, that occurred, we had a break into the women's bathroom that brings out and they can reach up on the door, got in there. So there was a pad on the floor with a bunch of needles in the bathrooms. So it's thank heavens one apartment seemed to be. So now we got plates over the screen so they can't. Well, that's sort of the personal thing. So we're looking at, we got a bid to receive. So we're looking at about twenty-five hundred dollars to replace the stuff with the memorial. So they did Vance come down, he was a quote today. So this quote is for four gangs. And they wanted, we talked it to far above when one whole, so that's not a good idea. So he wants to put one on the building, shine the bathroom. He wants to put it on the other corner, shine in the park, want to cover the baseball field, and then want to cover the new playground. They want to put one in the new boxes, you know, like their, like graffiti, they're graffiti looking. So the deal not put them on the poles because they want to run their boards inside. And they will be monitored for a week. And then as week starts again and it starts to race it. So something goes on with our computer seat who did damage. So it was, I think it was a bid of forty-six hundred dollars for this and sell on them. So this would be a district expense, it would be nothing. Is that so loss of the street? So and like I say, whatever you could do, you know, appreciate it because it's like you within our budget. And since we have grown to a big district, you know, we're one of the bigger districts now. I mean, we're almost second number two since we took the association shot. And we do, I looked last night at my list, so we have four, four big parts. So it's, we're growing, we're doing right.
And this is forty-six hundred for all?
Yes, it is, yeah. Forty-six, sixty, fifty-three. No, fifty-three cents. So, yeah, that's, that's, we're gonna get it. It's gotta be done, but it's gonna stop.
Well, thank you for that information. It's good for the city and the fire department to work in partnership sometimes because it's really good for the whole city, not just the fire. Yeah, that's how we got to.
We were fine with you guys, you know, chief looks good. Would you like?
How hard is it for me to not hold the part of the? Actually, Karen, it's.
We talked about that, you know, if we're lucky they don't shoot them with BB guns. I said, we hope and they don't shoot them with BB guns. Kids are kid. So he's gonna do some checking for us and see if there's some way they could put something and protect them. But they're gonna be in a peak of the fire hall. So when the pole, we said, no.
They got the access up on the pole, they somehow get on the pole.
Oh, well, they could throw off some break lights. So that would secure.
Are there any good cameras? I mean, so many of the cameras, you get a picture of some shadowy figure doing that. Are there cameras that are zooming up?
Some are better than that. Everything too is we've got. Choosing a little bit of the hands, oftentimes they think they might see what. So even if it's not the best picture at all, sometimes it's pretty good at anything.
And I think it's a great idea because you have other vandalists, a lot of PDs and.
These are plain on top.
It's a good idea.
Yeah. It is. So this advance, I think they go three. So, yeah, it, so this year, it's been fifty-three years I've been part of two, twenty-five department and then six nine five on the board. But I think these last few years, it's just terrible. Okay, any other question?
I have another question, so we don't have a discussion about it? I would discuss an amount, I guess. Is that something we can do here or do we have to do outside? The discussion in that. All right, my suggestion is that we just split it and give the fire district two thousand three hundred. I'm open to discussion. That's, I'm gonna start it then.
I agree, they did so much for us.
Absolutely, that's about level one. But with the dedicated ones.
So is there anyone from the citizen brief who'd like to speak? No, are there any hand raised? So, oh, is there a motion then to, to split the cost of the cameras with the fire department? I mean, a lot of members, is that sufficient buffer or do I need to?
I think that's good. I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear. It would have to be a reimbursement. So proceeds once the work is done and then get provided for the remainers.
Thank you, thank you.
And then actually, if you could add it into your motion that the city council finds it in, in the public's interest to cost share for this item. Because there are restrictions in state law regarding to give to public by seat and between ally agencies. That would be the issue.
So, thanks for what you said.
I think Karen, I think Karen captured it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was gonna, okay, that's second. We have a motion in the second. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
So one thing I didn't know is you cannot shine the cameras in the bathroom?
Yeah.
It's against law.
Yeah.
So if somebody opens the door, it shines, so anyway, I can't go open. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it in. You can go pick your tree now.
I believe.
And now we'll receive a presentation by the vice president Kelly on future proposed amendments to sewer regulations and creation of the sewer ladder repair replacement program revolving loan fund. Page fifty-five in our packets.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor Garance and members of the city council. City of Rio Grande, we are grievance, the estate regulation. City of Rio Grande, inflow and infiltration, I N I, is a known issue with the state and police staff. We, the staff, are actively looking for ways to resolve some of these I N I. One of the ways is to clarify language in the city of Rio Grande's municipal code, chapter thirteen point one zero, sewer regulation. Staff is looking for clearer language in chapter thirteen point ten for clarity and designating boundaries for present and future wastewater customers, such as one, making clear that back with devices and lower cleanouts with correct direction sweep are installed at a time of sale during sewer lateral inspection. This not only protects the customer by making sure that back with devices are installed, but by installing lower cleanouts with correct sweeps for the sewer main allows sewer crews to check lower laterals for bugs and cracks where I N I may occur. Two, clarifying language that at time of sale, two lateral inspections, camera work be done to look for tie-ins or shared ladders. When discovered, these be immediately made aware to the property owner and then a safety date timeline be given to fix the matter. This clarified language will help establish newer private back with devices, lower cleanup, and the city will install new lower. Three, regulating, requesting that if a property has been three hundred feet of the city sewer and their current on-site wastewater treatment subject system failed or is not adequate for future development of the property, the property tied into the city sewer system. It has often been brought to my attention that throughout the city of Rio Grande, there are many hidden private sewer ladders, some of them tying to their neighbor's ladder. According to city codes, this is not legal and must be dealt with. A lateral test of fact has attended and corrections must be made of that. It is during these tests that neighbors and homeowners discover the problem and letters of deferment are written to help with the completion of the project. Sometimes these ladder corrections can be costly and in some ways cannot be financially sustainable for low-income residents. It is staff's recommendation that at a future date, city, one, create the sewer lateral repair replacement program revolving loan fund, wherein the city sets aside a hundred fifty thousand dollars by the sewer fund to make available to homeowners that are needing new sewer lateral replacements and lower cleanup installation. Two, a fixed five-year loan with a six percent interest paid back to the city. This revolving loan fund, R L F project, is currently being worked on by the finance department and city attorney as it resolves some of the details for staff to have a complete presentation for the council at a future date. Staff also sees that the R L F will be useful when smoke tests of the sewer system are done and broken private assholes that are discovered during these tests will need to be fixed. Having a program that offers help when needed will be valuable to the city and the sewer customers to free them. Thank you for your time and consideration. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Mayor Wilson?
I, I think it's great idea. No, maybe questions later, no, right now, no. I, I think this is wonderful. I think the, the kind of stuff that seems upon people. And I think that as a city being able to help kind of maybe support like homeowners with these things that just pop up. Yeah, like, I think this, thank you.
Councilmember Orr?
No question.
Mayor Wilson?
I just want the camera inspectors, that's the city has the camera. Will we do an inspection of the camera?
No, usually what happens is when someone goes to sell their property, they hire a plumber to inspect the lower lateral. And in the lateral inspection process, I will, you know, make sure that when they've inspected their ladder, that they look for these things. Sometimes they don't always come up, so making sure that the camera work is done so that we, when they do a pressure test, they'll know why it's failing. It's not a surprise and they have to dig up the whole line. So doing camera work will actually find those lateral tie-ins. Whereas when they just put in a balloon and it makes it leaking, then they gotta dig up the whole line and then they find the tie-in. So it's kind of helpful on all ends, just to have a Karen.
And in the performance of the sweep, which, which way do you think I have to sweep?
At the lower cleanup, at the property line to the city of lower lateral sweep needs to be toward the main sewer main.
It's just what it does now, isn't that topic?
Some of them do, some of them don't. And that part of what needs to be part of the inspection on these lateral is that we make sure that the sweeps are correct. If they're incorrect, it causes issues further down the line.
That was one of the impressions that was required, you swept towards the city.
Yes, but sometimes they get placed incorrectly. And so at the time of sale, we can catch the problems, we can have a fix then.
Probably selling herself all of that. There, there was a renovation. That's more well. So this, we're only getting done on sale or do we want to find the boundary that wasn't right with?
Well, currently it's during only time of sale. So when they camera and they find that their neighboring tie-in ladder will have to put in their own type of ladder, that's people insert that. It's time we will have to put in a new lower ladder for that. So at that time, they will have to, you know, a lower cleanup with correct sweep, add one of the back. So making sure that those laterals are perfect.
Thank you. And with kind of tied off to, I'm comfortable with all's question. If you were doing inspection, if someone just had a problem in their house, in their line and, and you had to end up going and looking at it and doing inspection and something was exposed, would then they have to deal with that or will just, yeah, just get around to it when you can or?
Well, that's why we're asking for the clarity and. When it does become present to both party, the and the property owner, that they have time to fix it. And then with this revolving loan fund, if something's really big, then we can, they have the opportunity to get it met within those sixty days.
So when you're currently, you guys do I N I, right? Currently, just around the city, is that a practice that?
Um, well, we currently have been going out and cameraing where we know there are cleanouts, check our lower ladders to look for potential I N I issues during order. But most of the time, influence infiltration only happens when there's well.
Right, right, right.
Right now it's heightened, right? So we cam camera and look for those crap, big splits in the lower lateral sewer main.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Good question. Hello, council. Hello, city manager, hello, chief. Unfortunately, in this situation.
Identify yourself.
I'm, I'm Kyle Hallhorn, all property three five one, First Avenue with my husband Ronald Hallhorn, Jr. We've all had pretty much good discussions. In my situation, I had a plumber come test. Bought my house two and a half years ago, but it'd be coming up on three. I did everything as a homeowner should by getting other contractors to come and check my house out because buying a home is your biggest purchase. I have letters that backed up that I did my lateral tests. The city signed off on it and sewage backed up my house. The sweep, like she said, is backwards on the road, which is city property. Again, these things have gone unnoticed, but my paperwork was noticed, it was flagged, and there was no work. But the board is now getting work done, this connect from mine.
That's a lot. Thank you. I'm sorry that that happened to you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Cheryl Wolf, three Vanger Street. I just have a question because I look up about half of what you're saying. On the one that had to do with septic, does that apply to the property that's going to be the calipire? Is that? Is, you said it had to be property within a certain range of sewer plant? And I didn't catch all of this. That's the only property I could think of that it might apply to.
Yeah, there are some properties that currently have septic systems and if they are not big enough for the proposed project and they're within three hundred feet. So the old language back in twenty thirteen was changed to. Think of that one. And so some of the language said three hundred feet. If the property was within, within three hundred feet, they could be tied into the sewer. That language has disappeared. So we're trying to put that language back. So if you have a septic system and it fails and you're within three hundred feet, just tie into this. That's what they.
And, and just to clarify the point on the specific property that Ms. Wolf was talking about, which is the former job, the Calipire project. The state of California, as far as we are aware, in this particular issue is not required, regardless of city ordinance to, to comply with.
That sounds about right for the state. And then my other comment I wanted to make, and I know there'll be a future discussion of any of the loan program as it gets implemented, is the six percent interest seems a little high to me in consideration of when we bought a house here a couple decades ago, it was the city contractor, the one we were directed to use from the city that said, no, you just, you tie it right in. This is what you do. This is what the homes have been told, this is what's been going on for a lot of years knowingly, and homeowners are stuck in this situation at the moment. So, you know, I just kind of throw that out there, seeing as Rio Grande is a low-income property that just had major earthquakes and everybody has a heck of a lot of bills going up. Maybe that six percent interest could be talked about, bring it down a little bit. The program itself sounds good, you're gonna have to do the upgrades, but you're asking the homeowners essentially to do this upgrade, which is a benefit to the city, of course, and the property. So in, you know, anything we can do to make it reasonable for them, maybe bring that interest rate down a little bit would be great. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And so are we, I know we're not being asked to do anything, but do we? Is, are you or someone doing these amendments, clarifying the language? If that, did that?
Not then, I would speak to that.
Thank you. And. Do there any interest? We will bring that to a close. And we will move on to special call, public hearing of the list of delinquency records to send to the auditor controller to place them on the tax bill. Page fifty-nine in our packets, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to our finance director, Mr. Treus.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, Mayor Garance, members of the city council. On July sixth, two thousand twenty-three, the Rio Grande City Council adopted ordinance three nine nine dash two zero two three to allow the city to send delinquent sewer charges to the auditor controller to the tax vault as a lien. The city is required to follow protocol for safety code five four seven three, including holding a public hearing. During the hearing, the city must hear and consider all objections or protests referred to in notice. If the city finds that the protest was made by the owners of a majority of the separate parcels of property described in the report, then the report shall be adopted and charged. Charge collected separately from the tax report shall not constitute a lien against any parcel plan. Upon conclusion of the hearing, the city may doubt, revise, change, reduce, or modify and charge or overturn all objections and shall make a determination on each charge described in the report, which determination shall be final. On every report, tend to be sure following the final determination, the court shall file with the county auditor controller a copy of the report prepared pursuant to section five four seven three. It is the staff's recommendation to open the public hearing, proceed with input and delivery. Furthermore, staff recommends approving the final list of delinquent sewer accounts to send to the auditor controller to place them on the tax bill. Thank you for your time this evening and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Officer Watson?
Oh. It is possible.
Yes.
So what, what? See, that condition is nice, but to verify if majority of the people on this list disagree with you. Staff is what you say.
Yeah, so that's the majority of.
That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. So, we were talking earlier, you said it's similar to what we do with the nuisance abatement, you could have done a tax fee, but it takes five years before you can actually collect.
It's like five, five, yeah.
So, somebody just having not paid their sewer bill one year, they're not getting, well, they don't get a lien, but, um, but the view is like the body.
That's right, yeah, there wouldn't be any, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just make sure they're not gonna have an immediate. That's that. And, um, questions, anyone?
My name is Captain Fontaine and I live at twenty-five Douglas, and I got a notice. Um. For, it's a final due date for delinquent utilities, um, and on it, it says, um, there's going to be a lien on the property, is that true? It's a window seven, and you just said that I have, I mean, I have so much time before it actually hits the property to pay the bill?
Yep. City, if you don't, like, pay, the lien will be placed in the property, not the county auditor controller, but it's not five years.
Okay, and, um, this ordinance went into going last year. Okay, um. I'm hoping that I'm not the one that got it. Yeah, okay, um, I know that that's probably not my business, considering anything else, but, um, and it doesn't go to like, I mean, you don't get a chance to go to elections or nothing, you just go straight to me on the property, right? Can we talk about what a lien on the property means? It, it means it, yeah, I know what it means, it means that you, if I sell a property or like that, you get your money.
But nobody's swooping in and taking.
Yeah, no, I know that, I know, yeah, I'm just, um, with everything else that goes on with that property, I'm just kind of, um, I get it, that's what's on property, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, um. Any other questions? Yeah, you know? So is there a motion to approve the final list of delinquent sewer accounts to send to the auditor controller for placement on the tax? So, we have a motion, there's a second. Motion is second. Motion carries five zero. That brings us the council report. House number one, I think I did want to say, um, um, changes and notification, they want, yes, notification and walkability. And, um, they wanted to just pay more from the city, and so they had, you know, um, and it was a, they, there were some people who were intended, but they were in, and it was, it was nice to have businesses. That's about it.
Yes, I have encouraged proper ones to come back to those meetings and, uh, you know, and, and keep, uh, an open line of communication. I, I, I do think the manager must have been on this month right before one of the days, so more to come on that. Um, it has been so long since we were here, I, I remember works that, I don't know. We hosted a reded meeting, that was less, I think, we had a bunch of other people from jurisdictions down here and I think it went really well, they moved on to us to feedback on, you know, the gateway and, uh, they loved our electronic sign that said, welcome, reded board members. Um, and they really liked our city hall chain, yeah, anyway, it was just, it was nice to have people from all over Humble County down here giving us compliments, so. Nice to hear. Um, I've been to chamber meetings, I've been to school board meetings, I've been to fire district meetings. Not gonna, one oh one to ten P M. Um, I have another reded meeting coming, uh, this Monday, that will be in Rico. Tomorrow, we have nuisance advisory committee meeting here at three P M. Friday, one thirty, verification walkability, pride committee. I think that's it, with the nuisance, tomorrow. And I forgot, it's one of the days, I think we're having one of the days before I'm back here. But yeah, I think that's one of our next meetings, so, um, it is such a good time, it's wonderful, I hope everybody comes out, um, you know, we'll talk about a way to get a lot of feedback from the city, um, that was your good things. Drag your friends, my mom is singing on Thursday, Mingos, come on by at one thirty, she's good, I swear. That's it for me, thank you.
Um, nothing much, and H T A is canceled for this month, so.
Um, memorable.
Um, we'll still have to be that. The A next. Perfect. Because, uh, back, I, you know, there's no, we said, you know, it's recent.
And I did an H T A meeting first, the third, the third of July, and, um, they are really moving forward with their ride humbles. They can now, um, you can on one pass get from Richard, Brooklyn City all the way to Santa Rosa. On one pass, even if you change systems in Micaia, maybe you, you still can just ride on that one ticket. Um, and, um, I am doing my best to fight for them to find on their express that direction to stop at Davis here in Riodale so that Riodale citizens don't have to go to Fortuna, they tell me that there's a timing thing, that they timed it out, but I then reminded them, because they want to stay on one oh one, that Wildwood is one. Fight for that, you know, and I think they can hot and off at Davis without any problem anyway. So I am fighting for that, um, I continue to fight for that, but right now, they, they, they said they heard me, but they didn't change anything, so I'll be fine. Um, I have a side commission meeting on Thursday and I will not be here on August second, make up for when I wasn't supposed to be here, but then I was. Julie, I'm going to miss the, um, the H T A meeting in the past. The office, one, the office, okay, I'm here.
Mayor Garn, the, uh, so you're the express, talking about the, the one that's gonna try to fix the the ticket right now.
Oh, it's very hard on now. Yeah, and, um, so Amtrak now, it used to be that Amtrak could only, you could only ride Amtrak if you were connected to a train. Now that's changed, you can just use Amtrak as a bus service. But it only stops in, well, Arcata, but Fortuna in the south part, it only stops, you know, and it no longer stops in Sotia. So, um, the H T A is now, um, outside of Amtrak. Now, as, I'm starting with an express service that will go, but it stops at certain spots because they were trying to meet a plot. And that's the one that I am trying to get them to stop here in Riodale. And, you know, that, that would be something the community should be able to get a sign, uh, H T A to stop it, because it just on and off. Keep going, up on up. Um, but that's, uh, that's the story in the moment. So I think that is, that's the motion to adjourn. So we have a motion at second, a motion at second, meeting is adjourned until August sixth at six P M.